All right, like call the committee, the whole meeting for Monday, September 19th, 2022 to order. We'll call please.
Mayor Gaffino.
Here.
Trustee Curtis.
Here.
Trustee Gately. Trustee Lowery.
Here.
Trustee Nedved.
Here.
All right, audience comments. Trustee comments. Discussion item one, Steve.
Yes, item number one is a discussion to create a police comfort dog program. So I'm going to ask Chief Delio to explain it, and I'm also going to point out that bringing a dog here is it's it's a that's real good showmanship right there. All right, go ahead.
Can't say no to a dog. Thank you, Steve. Um, I can't take any credit for this. Um, Officer Parr brought this to my attention when I took over as chief. Sold me on it, did my research. Um, think it's gonna be a great benefit to the community, to the village staff. Christine Wagner from the village has also been instrumental in this. That's why I love it's been a team effort. So with that, Officer Parr has a presentation. We also have Chance from Elgin with his handler. So if you have any questions, we can give you an idea of what the program entails, how it's used, and just the benefit it will be for the village.
Mayor Board, thank you. Evening. Police Department is interested in launching a comfort dog program. Police Department Comfort Dog is specifically trained to provide comfort to people who are in need of emotional support. When used in schools, at community events, or with various victims during the course of police work, the result contributes to the building of trust and positive relationship between the police and the public. Dog can also be supported to village staff members in all departments. The village could use a comfort dog in a number of situations. For child victims, we could use a dog in a scenario where the child witnesses a domestic situation or is a victim of abuse. In critical incidents, aid and mental health situations where first responders or the public is involved in a traumatic event. For school support, we could utilize the dog during recess when the officer is just simply walking around the playground, helping a child read, or we're just having a bad day. For community relations, the comfort dog could make appearances at various events such as North River Days, the Police Community Picnic, Independence Day, et cetera. After researching, excuse me, after researching several options, I believe a company called Sit Service would provide the best canine for the program. Dogs from Sit are bred specifically for each for service roles and behaviors and have received a high degree of training. This option also requires the least amount of travel for staff and coverage and provides minimal coverage by other staff in the officer's absence. The cost to start the program would be approximately $11,915. This cost includes the dog, squad safety equipment, first year veterinary costs, startup supplies for such as a leash, a collar, et cetera, and a bed. The cost to operate annually after this would be between $1,300 and $1,500 for food and annual veterinary costs. The initial cost for the program can be absorbed into the current budget. I would be the handler for the comfort dog and have the dog with me while on duty. In order to transport the dog safely, one of the newly purchased squad cars would be outfitted with the necessary safety equipment of a kennel and temperature monitor and heat alarm. The dog would live with me at home and rather be at the police station and back up, the dog would live with me at home rather than the police station where other staff members would be burdened with the care of it. I've discussed my willingness to work various shifts and come in as needed with Chief Delio to provide a maximum benefit for the program. One of the objectives in the village strategic plan is to facilitate community outreach in the police department, which will be supported through this program. Overall, the ability to provide a level of mental health support for individual for an individual after an incident can be an invaluable stepping stone for the right path. The comfort dog can provide that first step. Due to supply constraints, we would be looking to purchase the safety equipment for the squad program ahead of formal policy approval at an upcoming meeting. This would include the kennel, temperature alarm, and window tint for the squad. I would like to take this opportunity to acknowledge and thank Detective Craig Arnold and his partner Chance for coming tonight, and he is open to any questions the board may have. Thank you for your time, and I would be happy to answer any questions regarding proposals.
Thank you.
I have a question. What type of dog are you talking like a German Shepherd or?
No, therapy dogs and comfort dogs specifically are kept, the shepherds and the malinois as you typically see for police work, those are not kept as comfort dogs. They don't want like people to get confused. So this specific dog, my research has done, um, there's a very high probability, even though we're not 100% sure, would be a American field lab, like a black lab.
Okay, look at that. Excellent.
I think that's great. Yeah, fantastic.
I have a quick question. So what would happen if the department was in need of the dog and it's your day off?
So, um, again, I've discussed my willingness to Chief Delio to be called in. Um, I would even adjust my schedule accordingly to whenever whenever it's needed.
And also trustee Curtis, um, there will be a secondary handler. Um, so if Officer Parr is on vacation or is out for any extended period of time, that officer would step in and be available to be the handler.
Very good.
Yep, sounds great.
Yeah, I like it.
Proceed. All right.
So with that, real quick, just to point out, the startup cost at about 11,900. Most of that is the vehicle modification. So if I have direction, I'm going to go ahead and start moving forward on that so we can get it up and running.
Yep.
Yes.
Yep, sounds good. Item two, Steve, Public Works Building.
So item number two is going to be John's presentation tonight on the Public Works Building project. And of course, uh, as you you are aware, we are currently looking at three different options and layouts. The purpose of tonight's meeting is we're still far away from actually getting to, you know, a real number and and honing in, but you can't really do any of that until you pick a concept. So tonight's goal is to pick one of three concepts and start working on design, schematic design, they call it. And that schematic design process will hone in on what we call, and I hate to use this term, a real number. But it's going to tell you basically what the true cost to build the building is most likely to end up. So with that, John's going to walk you through the three options, and then we're going to try to pick one.
Steve, I have a question. Didn't we already go through this a few months back?
So we've had conversations about this, um, in the past. We never formally picked an option. So we're tonight's, we've had discussions about the options in in regards to land swaps and whatnot, so that we were prepared for the idea that we've moved forward with a potential option that requires us swapping land. We're not sure that that's the option the board is willing to move forward with. Tonight is to pick that option, you know, and then go to the architect and construction manager and start moving forward if that is the option you pick.
So yeah, I'll just give you a brief status update is where we're at with the the project. We are working through the validation stage right now, which is the stage of the project where we are looking more closely at the three options and kind of vetting them through the village board and getting feedback on that. What I'm going to do today is just kind of briefly run through the table that's been prepared on the memo that displays option one, two, and three, and kind of talk you through what I found to be some of the differences and then what we're seeing on the screen. The images that you're going to see on the screen aren't necessarily really clear, but it the color is probably going to be what I'm going to try to focus your attention to. So when I was evaluating the three options, I kind of developed some criteria in order to get a better idea of the differences and compare and contrast the three options. The first, I mean, it just kind of runs through the first option, which is on the screen now. And this option is the renovation. And what this option shows on the screen is there's a blue rectangle towards Butterfield Road, towards the right hand side of the screen. That rectangle would be a new addition to the facility. The actual existing facility on that screen is the yellow and red without the little red rectangle to the north. So the only part of that structure out of all the colors up there that is the existing building would be the red and yellow. And in that yellow is going to be the common area. So that would be where the break room is adjacent to that in the red is going to be the, um, the vehicle, um, wash bays and mechanics area. The purple is overhead storage. It's a mezzanine, so it'll be a second level that overlooks the green section where the heated storage is. And the green is just going to be all of that area where vehicles are parked to keep them out of the elements. The orange is streets division storage. So that's going to be the equipment and material and daily tools that they have stored in that area. And the blue area is going to be the same, but for the water division. Now with option one, not all of the vehicles, the structure with the renovation isn't large enough to hold all of our vehicles. So what I'm going to show you is on the next slide is we would be also keeping this green area, which is all the way towards the back of our property, which should effectively be another building, just housing vehicles. So the option one renovation itself would not be able to contain all of the equipment. We'd also be utilizing a separate building that would be, um, constructed further. I guess that'd be south on our property. So when we were looking at, when I looked at those, um, criteria and was kind of ranking this option, the this option is the addition renovation, the construction with this option would be phased because they're going to be building the construction around the existing building. So as they're building the new construction, we'd be in the existing building. When they went to build the to renovate the existing building, at that time, staff would move into the newly constructed area. So it'd be a phased approach where staff was kind of moving in and out of of the areas. In this scenario, the the building itself, the renovation would not have enough capacity to house all of the all of the vehicles and all the equipment we have. So that's why in the table it says no. We would have to actually construct that separate building further off the property in order to, um, meet the space needs. In this situation, demolition of the existing building wouldn't occur. It'd be some minor limited demolition that might occur around the outside facade in order to abut the new construction up to that building. But it wouldn't be a full scale, knock the building down and remove all the, uh, different materials. Operational efficiency with this option is limited. And what I mean by operational efficiency is we're not all, we don't have all the vehicles under one roof in this situation. We do have other vehicles that would be stored at the building on the other side of the, um, property. It would most likely be the vehicles that we're not using on a data day, day to day basis, like, um, some of the leaf machines and that. But overall, we wouldn't have all that equipment in a way in the building, which would be a functional way which we could utilize it. The cost for this option, the high end is 22,191,913. The low cost is 14,417,302. What you're going to find is the cost on all three of the options is very similar. And after I go through the the three options, um, we kind of talked a little bit more about that. Option number two on the screen, the color scheme is going to remain the same. Blue, in this situation, the entire existing building is demolished and we're building the new facility all under one roof in that same location. So in this situation, near Butterfield Road, we have the light blue administration towards the front. Behind that's the common areas in yellow. The blue and orange again are the streets and water equipment. Behind that is the red area, which is the, um, mechanics bay and wash bay. And then kind of towards the the, um, bottom of the slide, the teal green is again the the vehicle storage where we're storing all the, uh, equipment under, the equipment and vehicles under one roof. The purple would be where the location of the mezzanine is. The unique feature, I would say surprising feature of this option is that the entire length of the green area is roughly a little bit more than 400 feet when I estimated the length of it, which is means if I'm doing my math right, I think that's the length of a football field or a little bit more. So it's a really long walk from one end to the other. If you're starting out in the administration area and you're going to walk to get to a a vehicle at the other end. So in this situation, um, the phase, the construction is not phased. The building, our existing facility would be knocked down, and we would have to find a different place to operate out of. So we would either operate out of the old shop, which is very, very small on the the far end of the the property, or we'd have to look for a new home temporarily to operate out of while they construct this option. The operational efficiency, you know, it's it's more functional than option one because we're not shuttling between buildings. But at the same time, a building that that long, you know, it could take you a while to walk from one end to the end of the building. I just honestly keep thinking about myself because I can't get out of the house sometimes, so I forget my keys or my phone or a wallet in my bedroom. So I'd leave the office. By the time I get down halfway down to the end of the building, I forget the keys that I have with my vehicle. But I mean, there's, there's things that are just kind of more practical that you think about with a a facility that large. The good thing is though, it does fit all the vehicles in in the building. So, um, it does, I think, have slight more advantage to it than than the first option. The third option is the one that we've talked about in the past. And that option is the one that I think was probably most preferred, um, at least from the feedback that I have gathered. This is, um, the the land swap that would occur with the adjacent property owner, the SKCTA. This building would be constructed brand new on their on their property. Our existing facility would remain intact during this construction of this building. So that means not only are we operational and functional during the entire duration of construction, but was time to move in, part of the agreement was that the the building would still be available for future use by either the village or the the fire department should should we go that route. So again, in this options of the color scheme is very similar to, um, to the other two options. What I think is notable in the this option compared to the other two is you'll notice that it's a little bit more rectangle or square than it is rectangular. So, um, the it allows for better traffic flow in the green area of the car trucks going in one exit and then spinning around and coming through the opposite door or the other. It's it's just, it provides a more fluid traffic flow in within the garage itself. The same amount of space is going to be there as an option two. The, um, wash bay in this operation is a little bit more compact and it is shown on in the red area just to the back of the the heated storage area. So, um, I think from a staff perspective, this was kind of the preferred option that we were looking at. Again, we're looking for village board feedback to see if that's kind of the same feelings or sentiment that you have. Should we choose an option today? Whichever option we do choose to move forward, we'd like to move to the next step in design phase, which would be the schematic design. And what that does is that schematic design allows us to take a conceptual design, drill down a little bit more, get the details a little bit more refined, not to the level of, you know, blinds and windows and what we're kind of type of carpets going in the building, but more of a, uh, a functional drawing that a a construction manager will be able to make a more accurate cost estimate out of. And and that's partially the reason why we have the range, um, that's provided in this. These are the cost estimates that we we, um, procured from the construction manager. And essentially what's going to happen then is, um, we're going to put more effort into the design, the architect and the construction manager. We'll get a better handle on what materials we're going to need, a little bit more idea of the exact size of the building. And then we'll come back with a a cost estimate that'll be a little bit more accurate. And as the design process goes, I can't say that the estimate is going to necessarily get lower, but is going to get more accurate. And we'll have a better understanding of where we're going to be with the building and position financially to understand if we want to move ahead with the project in some.
So what was the price ranges then again? I'm sorry.
So yeah, option one is between, it's going to be very similar. Option one is between the low end 14 million and 22 million. Option two is between 14 million and 21 million. And option three is between 14 million and 22 million. So they're almost all right.
Pretty close to the same. I like option three. I like, I'll tell you why. I like the design better. I think it's more efficient for for our staff and we can stay in business. The other, you don't have to like, we don't have to be searching for a home for our public works trucks.
Right.
I like the idea that you can house all the trucks inside that square area. I think it's just a better fit for us. So that's where I'm at. And I said that last time.
Tell me about the 14 million versus 22. What's not there? What is there?
So there you can't really trim $7 million out of a building with just kind of taking carpet and features like that out. So it would be a reduction in the size of the building itself. So should we reduce the size of the building? We would either. It might be a compromise, a percentage off of every space.
That we all saw there at the 22 side.
This is the high end right now is what they took took the estimate off of.
But that's the space needed, right?
That's correct.
Well, then we, yeah.
How many years out will that?
A design for typically, these are 30 years.
I'm sorry.
30 years. Yeah.
We don't want to go lower. We don't want to have a smaller building and have problems and do an addition later. We want to do it right. And I, and I just stress the fact that you want to, you want to do a bigger bill instead of a smaller.
How about the fire department and the shuffling of land?
Yeah, I was going to ask that.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, we've had good conversations with them. The plan was.
Steve, I can't hear you.
We're having good conversations with them and they have a draft agreement. And so, um, we were hoping to have it on the agenda tonight. So we want to keep the process moving forward and we hope to have it on the agenda as early as the next meeting. Um, and and once again, if you know, the terms of that agreement aren't here right now, but when we work on the final terms and bring it to the board, it essentially will give a placeholder. So it's to give us time to evaluate that land. It's not a guarantee that a swap occurs. It's basically to hold the land and give us time to determine that everything is good. And if we determine everything is good, then we move forward with the project, just like the design as John was saying. You get this range and it's all over the map. And we've already met one time with the architects and and the construction managers in the last couple of months to look at this and say, can we trim some of the building down? What are some of the options to reduce the cost? And, you know, I'm not going to guarantee that we were able to cut two or $3 million off the price, but I can tell you that there is the maximum space we need, the minimum of space we need. And then somewhere in between is that space will definitely get us what we need. But we might have to make a few sacrifices along the way, and that's what we're trying to figure out. Schematic design is the is the key though, because that is the more accurate price. And of course, that comes back to the board. So you'll see that price. Then we'll talk about financing options and whether it's it's good to move forward or not.
So, hey, John, so when you say that goes out like 30 years roughly, does that account for future new trucks, additional trucks, all that? Is that what you mean by?
Correct. As it's designed right now, we have accounting for, um, additional vehicles as well as some additional staff.
Yeah. So the, so like all the spaces that are on the screen right now, account, I mean, you're not going to fill those now, obviously.
That would be. There'll still be some empty spaces left in the green and a couple extra offices left in the blue area.
Right.
Catered locker room and all that.
Correct. Extra staff.
Yeah, where we would be looking to, let's say, if there were places to cut space, one of them is that we've already identified is, and I'm not saying it's a guarantee, but the wash bay, for instance, you know, the design might show enough space to wash two or three vehicles at once, but like, that's a luxury.
Yeah.
You don't necessarily have to have that. So can we not get down to one car at a time? And so when you do that, you can cut a few thousand square feet off the building by doing things like that. And that's what we're trying to hone in on.
I say get what you need though, you know, it's like you cut yourself too short and then five years from now, somebody like, damn, we should have probably did that, you know, so just.
I mean, you don't, you can't say that because then he'll come back to you tomorrow.
What you don't want to have happen is.
Have something that you're pretty happy with, but not like.
Then it then it costs more 10 years down the road to do.
Or you know, it's like.
I mean, having conversations internally and throwing these dollar amounts around and you see just how how large they are. And you say, okay, what is the most responsible thing to get exactly what needs to be done at the best price?
Probably not like a floor couch in your office, but maybe a nice tweed couch.
Yeah, no. Maybe some five gallon buckets.
So we all think three?
Yeah, option three. I like it.
Yeah.
And we'll keep moving forward with that. Thank you.
Great. All right, item three, road program.
Uh, so thank you. So this year we had a a large road program. And, uh, next year, yeah. Historically, we've had some decent road programs. They range anywhere from one and a half to this year was a little over $3 million in price. As you know, we go through a, and I'm not going to take Brandon's presentation, but Brandon, Tony Riley, our village engineers here. And he's going to show you, um, how we select our roads and the next year's road program that we're, uh, projecting and looking for your feedback on whether to move forward or not.
All right, thank you. So yes, like Steve said, I'll be talking about next year's road program. And, uh, first just want to give a quick overview on the color coding of the maps that are coming up for the pavement conditions. With blue being the the roads that have recently been repaved and are in best condition, kind of going through green to yellow, orange, darker reds, and then purple being the worst. And as you get into the yellows and oranges, where it starts to be roads that would be candidates for resurfacing. So I'll start with the map of the east half of the village. Uh, you can see there's a good chunk that's now blue from, uh, this past road resurfacing the past couple of years, actually three years, kind of on the east side. So this map is updated from the last time when we did the the pavement study. So we did kind of decay the roads that have gone down since then, and then also made the roads that have been resurfaced since then up to the blue. So you can kind of see that, down in the southeast corner is a lot of dark reds and oranges, kind of like a cluster there with a few other kind of sporadically in this area town. And then moving to the west side, there are some blue from some resurfacing a few years ago. And then also some streets starting to occasionally be in the reds and oranges and a lot of yellows in this area. So we use these.
Slide, I have a quick question on that slide. Can you go back to that? I I noticed on the far left, it goes from a lot of blue to a lot of yellow, but I don't see any green.
Yeah, there's not a lot on here. It's just.
Rapid deterioration?
Yeah, I mean, there's a few with, I think we probably, uh, if I don't off the top of my head, all the road history off the top of my head here, but I think we did do some Randall Road resurfacings, which were larger projects probably about nine, 10 years ago. So I like Randall Road is mostly green here as well as Oak Street. So I think there was a period of time where a lot of the funding kind of went to larger roads for time. And then a lot of these are just developments that all I think happened at a similar timeframe in the village where I don't think most of those areas that are yellow and orange have been resurfaced since the developer did them. So I think they're just kind of like a period of time where the amount of streets that were in the village kind of expanded and then kind of funding was more dedicated to some, maybe some bigger, larger roads for a period of time. This is probably, I guess, how I'd most explain that. I don't know if you have anything else.
Yeah, I mean, going back, uh, to your point, trustee Curtis, the green that you see, uh, the, like you said, Randall and Oak were done within the last five to 10 years. And so they're at that range where they get a lot of traffic. So if an average road lasts, let's say 20 years to 25 years on average, those might deteriorate a little faster because they're more heavily trafficked. As you see, we did areas like Orchard Estates and, um, Orchard Crossings a few years ago, which is why they're still blue. But as Brandon pointed out, Tanner Trails, for instance, um, Lake Run, Remington, Mirador on the west side. Those are probably original roads for 25 years ago, 2025. So they're getting to that point uh, right now where they're starting to deteriorate quicker. The key is what we try to do is we try to group neighborhoods together. It's almost like ripping the Band-Aid off. What we want to do is we want to get the roads A before they deteriorate to the point where they they fail. Because once they fail, the cost to reconstruct the road is is more than rebuilding a road or excuse me, resurfacing a road. And then the other key is when you have big areas that cost, for instance, the east side over the last few years, if you add up the dollar amounts in that northeast side, I mean, it's probably close to five and a half, $6 million, somewhere in that range over the last three years. You're trying to do them all at one time because they're all deteriorating roughly. They were built around the same age. They're falling apart at the same time. You're hoping to get in and out of there. So you're not there one year. Then you leave, then you come back and rip up areas that were just ripped up a year ago. You're kind of, hey, two, three years in a row, it's going to be really bad. But once we're out of your neighborhood, we're out of your neighborhood for like 25 years. Yeah. So we're trying to group them together. What you won't see here, and I'm sorry, Brandon, if I'm jumping ahead, is we also have things called one offs. We call them one offs. So sometimes a smaller neighborhood, maybe you see all the blue, Oak Hill is not in that group or, you know, but someone's right next to it. That was redone, it's blue. So you say, well, Oak Hill's real small, so it's not, it's not going to be its own road program, but maybe Windstone and Oak Hill get added in on a year that we, in the next few years, if we have a lower road program cost somewhere in in one area, we might say, hey, this is a good time to jump on those roads before they start to go red. And then, of course, Orchard Gateway is red right now, and that is actually a massive project that we are getting funding for, um, towards millions of dollars to to actually rebuild that road.
Yeah. So using these maps and scoring from the the studies that we had done, help us formulate a strategy and come up with our road program. When doing this, we also look at water main, sanitary sewer, storm sewer needs in the area. So we don't want to be tearing up a street uh, and then have known water issues that we're going to be tearing it up again for. So we want to look at that when studying, uh, the streets to to choose. And, uh, we do update the PCI maps on a yearly basis to take into account what we've resurfaced and the general decay of the roads over time. decay of the roads over time to keep our maps up to date. And then again, we do the pavement assessments every three to five years. And we just did ours uh, last year, so it wouldn't be due again for another couple of years. And that takes in a more comprehensive look and analysis of roads to get even more accurate of scoring. I guess for this one, I'll turn it over to Jason.
So the uh, road pr- program gets paid out of the uh, villagers capital projects fund uh, on a historical basis. Uh, the main revenues coming into the capital projects fund would be the half percent non-home rule sales tax, three percent electricity tax and the gas utility tax. Historically, these have been about one point eight million dollars here or there. Um, this past fiscal year, so fiscal year twenty-two, these were actually about two point one million dollars. So we've seen some increases coming in um, on the base revenues into the fund. Uh, in addition, we've made some additional, some extra uh, capital transfers from our general fund into the capital projects funds. You can see the last four years from three hundred eighty thousand to uh, two point seven five million dollars. So in total, you know, we put in an extra seven million dollars over the last four fiscal years. This has helped the capital uh, fund get up to about ten point four million dollars fund balance ending uh, fiscal year twenty-two. Uh, if you go back to two thousand eighteen, kind of when it, before these transfers started, the capital fund balance was at about three million dollars. So it's grown significantly. Um, some of these extra revenues coming into the general fund being pushed over for capital reasons. Um, the twenty-two capital uh, uh, road program was budgeted at three million dollars. Um, basically using some of this reserve balance and current year revenues. Um, and then looking forward, when we're kind of looking on a, a long-term basis with the road program, we're kind of looking at about one point eight million dollars or so. Um, some years we may have a reduced amount where there's not as much going on. Um, there might be some years kind of like this twenty-two where there's a lot more to do, but we kind of trying to average it out around that eight, one point eight, one point nine million dollar range.
So for the twenty twenty-three road program, uh, one of the areas I had the, the worst conditioned streets was the Chesterfield subdivision. And uh, the cost estimate at this point kind of fit that one point eight million dollars pretty much exactly. So for twenty twenty-three, we're proposing to, to focus on the Chesterfield subdivision. And as far as the conditions of the roads, this table here shows their P C I score along with the condition um, for each of the streets within there. And then doing a, a length weighted average of the streets, the average for that whole subdivision is thirty, which is a, a very poor condition. So there's quite a bit of alligator cracking and rutting along the, the curb lines as well as curb deterioration. So this one point eight million dollars is for about two point eight miles of road. So, so I guess that's the end of my presentation. So I guess any comments or questions?
Well, I think that's a good area to go, go after. Cause it's right, you did just did the north side. No, finish off. We're out of there.
So can we look at the, the seed issue as far as the complaints on, on Pine Creek area, you know, that first two feet or whatever. And um, I, I think it was bad timing too, because when they did it, it was scalding out, you know? If I went off the blanket could be better because I know they put their real cheapest like straw blanket and there's like a couple of little straws and the rest of it's just bare. So or can we set up somewhere like if it was sod, they would water sods. I mean, could, because I think some of the issue is nobody waters it, the residents, right? And then the weeds come and then, but the soil wasn't so good either. Some places where the soil was like boulders, I saw them put in there in some places. So or a secondary punchless where they have to come back and you know, make it right or I don't know what your thoughts on that are. Maybe a faster growing grass seed or I, I don't know, but.
Yeah, I guess as far as the grass seed, we just specked out the, I guess, the standard kind of I dot one that they have in their spec book for kind of areas that get salt. Um,
A lot of people like the I dot classification may not match if you have bluegrass sod. You know, on nice yards. I mean, I've had discussion before that, you know?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, in future ones, if, I guess we are, we can be open to any kind of grassy to spec. I guess we just would have to, I mean, it would be the same for the whole project necessarily.
Fescue that would kind of fill in nice and quick or do we water or we tell them to water or I don't know how we get around this, but if you drive over there, it's sounds pretty bad. A lot of crabgrass in there and stuff. And so trustee sells are wanting me to share. That was her thought as well.
No, yeah, I agree. There was a lot of weeds this year and portions of the project. Definitely is like the project kind of the
But don't they normally do more in the fall or I'm trying to remember because this year is weird with the strike and all that.
I think like uh, the first, the stuff that got done soonest, they got the topsoil and the seed in while it was kind of at the tail end of kind of having some rains where that part grew in a little better. Where then yeah, as it got further south through the subdivision, it became that part of the year where it was just dry with no rain for, for a few weeks pretty much. So yeah, I think that was one of the probably biggest contributors to the seed not taking and then grab the
I remember is like that all time or is this year the worst on Alora, your area?
Yeah, I mean.
Lot of that.
We, we had weed like up here that were popping out of some of these. And I think people, I think people didn't know if they were supposed to cut it or what they were supposed to do to it. So it, it became unsightly at one point and now it's finally, I think.
Sure. It still is in some areas though.
Yeah, I think, yeah, part of, I think maybe like no one's grass was growing either. And then just the weeds were only growing maybe for a time where that kind of led to some getting even taller, I think, but.
I think it's something we can address a little, maybe a little more clarity and we generally send out a letter for programs. So maybe if we were to make it a little bit more specific to what you can do to make this, the grass maybe, you know, grow a little bit better, just maybe specify a little bit more of our expectations for the watering or not even our expectations, maybe just what
How to, yeah, how often?
Yeah.
Yeah, but I, I want to say something here though. The weeds I see in my neighborhood are not typical weeds that have been in my neighborhood since the last twenty years since I've lived there. So for anyone to imply that perhaps it was seeded because of the lack of grass grow, I think is an error. I think the soil came with the, the weed seeds in it is what I'm convinced of. And that was my complaint, Brian, that um, can, can we talk to somebody about that and say, hey, look, can't we get a little bit better quality? Uh, cause when they did it last year too, I don't know if I, I think I mentioned it to you, John, on my sidewalk. The, the grass was obviously a different breed of grass completely. It was more like a crabgrass that, that they planted to replace the grass they dug up. So um,
I'm not sure if it's in the soil maybe, but even if you, if you have a good stand of grass, it'll choke the weeds out. But if you don't water it, the weeds are wherever they're coming from, like airborne soil, somebody's shoe, I don't know, but you know what I mean? It's, you got to water the stuff. And the ones I've seen, a lot of people didn't, you know?
I don't know the, you know, I'm not a grass expert, but when the mayor asked about the different types of seeds that we use and, and whatnot. So Brandon and John do have this manual. It's like this I dot manual of
That's more for sides or highways.
Well, it does have a section for lawns. And then when we talked about it, the one that we grow is, it's classified as lawn seed, but it also has a high volume of salt tolerant grasses. Whereas you know, maybe we look at the one that has a higher um, bluegrass content or whatever, because I'm not sure that the salt tolerant level matters as much on a side street as it would like a highway.
Right.
So I mean, that's something as far as the seed goes, doesn't necessarily mean that the percentage of weeds would be different, but it might be a more you might have more.
Better dirt. Like Mike said, I mean, the dirt I seen was like clumps of just stuff wasn't very good.
I know we talked about there's specifications on pulverized dirt. You're supposed to have pulverized dirt and, and things like this, but I don't know about, I mean, that's something we look into, but we've never really talked about the location of where they get the dirt and whether that can be specked.
It's a little, not impossible. I don't, I'm not aware of any more research on that. The weed content in the topsoil, I don't know that there's any way to say that this dirt has ninety percent.
Yeah, I, I think that'd be hard to do. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I work at the township highway department and this is something we deal with every year. Um, uh, it, it, to me, it's a combination of the dirt, you know, and you know, we get topsoil. We get it from the same place usually, but where are they getting it from? I mean, they're just getting it from developments that are out.
Right. Or strip of field that could have soybean in it, a little bit could have corn. I've had some corn growing on.
Yeah, I mean, it, it's so random. That, that's going to be impossible to control. Um, the thing that we've helped to choke out the weeds quick is we, we water. I mean, I
Yeah, you have to get the stand.
We have two water trucks, you know, we use our brine trucks.
And that's why I was thinking if Geneva, you know, if it was sod, somebody would like not the village, but you know, like I think uh, Trey County does sodding for the gas company and somewhere. They have to water it, you know, they have to come back and water it again. So I don't know if that's something that if it's, if you know, if they do it in the fall, not bad, you know, or even in the spring, but man, you do it in July and August, that stuff just fries.
It's got to be watered like every day. We, we, first thing we do in the morning right now, we go and water. So it's and yeah, Mike, Larry, Larry, it's, it's there. They're not normal weeds. I mean, they're like, they're like forests. Yeah.
Spider web.
Yeah.
Yeah, spidery. Yeah, there, we agree with you.
Yeah, but it's, it's hard. I mean.
Yeah, I, I, it was too, it was too much, too pervasive. So I
I mean, water.
Anybody said here, I'm just saying like, you know, could be the environment, you know, the time when they did it, maybe a little
You know, I could, I could imagine homeowners saying, well, I don't want to pay for water, you know?
Yeah.
You know, people
At the time or know how to do it or it's not my road or I don't know. Different things. So.
Yeah, I mean, there is options of specking out like supplemental watering where the contractor would come in and do waterings. But I mean, there, that's typically or do they like, that's like a pay item that you pay extra for?
Do hydro seed instead of the grass seed in the blanket? Maybe that'd be better because that blanket's really not very good. And people just get caught in their mower and they're, what do I do with this?
Yeah, yeah, we could try specking hydro seed if that's something you're, we can look into that.
If it, they think it germinate faster because some people can germinate that seed in that tank like three days and then when they put it down, it's already got a head start. But I don't
Just a good idea.
Yeah.
I think one of the things that's kind of been a blessing in person, Geneva Construction is kind of changed their operation lately and that they're really compressing the time that they're, how they did the project done. So and I'd say like four, three, four or five years ago, they'd start a project and linger on and linger on and then it'd be fall by the
Right, right. And that's perfect. Yeah.
Actually coming in like in February and they're done, right? Obviously. So
Yeah.
Right.
It's not good for the seeding operation, but it's great for the residents because the project's over.
Right.
Sands of strike.
They like everything if you could handle it all. Quick and good and.
Yeah, without that strike this year, I mean, they were doing, pick two. They were doing five miles of road, I think. And, and they were, they were moving really quick. And then all of a sudden the strike really slowed it down. But you know, as far as all the specs go, I mean, there is a dollar amount to everything. So like for instance, the watering. So what we could do is we can always talk about if that's an alternate or something that we can put in a bid. But in the meantime, I think the staff can just do some research, look at, I always use this term neighboring communities, which is see if they do it any differently, if they find that they have the same results that we have and, and you know, what their pricings are for what they typically get back. Um, ultimately tonight's goal was to, uh, but I'm glad it came up because then it'll prep us for the spec a few months from now. But um, the big one is just making sure that we're on the, the right track as which roads we're doing.
Very good.
Looks good. Looks good.
Very good, yeah.
All right, well, the motion adjourned and then we'll enter an exact session for property acquisition.
Motion to adjourn second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose, same sign. All right. Thank you.